It started at seven o'clock. We'll call this meeting to order. This is the August 18th, 2021, meeting of the Concord City Planning Board. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Chairman Woodfin.
Here.
Vice Chair Foss.
Here.
Counselor Champlin.
Here.
Member Smithmire.
Here.
Member Rosenberg.
Here.
Member Hicks.
Here.
Member Fox.
Here.
Member Santa Cruz.
Here.
A full house. Thank you, everyone. Okay, item three on our agenda is approval of the July 21st minutes. Would someone like to make a motion to approve those minutes as submitted?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Those minutes pass. Minute, a quick overview on the agenda. If anyone's here for the map line consideration, which is the last item on our agenda. I think. Where is it? Or is it off?
It's not on a public hearing.
It's not on.
It's 9A.
It's 9A on a public hearing. Pittco Friolator requesting realignment of a map line of future streets. That item has been postponed to no certain date. So if anyone's here for that, that will not be heard tonight. Other than that, everything on our agenda will be heard and moves us right on to item five on our agenda, item which is determination of completeness by consent. We have, are these all? These are all determination of completeness components, right?
Correct.
Okay, so which ones are, we're gonna take them-
Let's just do them one at a time because of the-
We're gonna take them out of consent. We don't have any signs?
We do. They're next.
Okay.
Yeah. We recommended to take them out of consent because two of the items are actually recommendations for developments of regional impact. So 5A, I don't know if you want me to read it into the record.
Yeah, please.
TF Moran, on behalf of Interchange Development, requests major site plan approval for a new fast food restaurant with drive-through parking and associated site improvements at 1 Whitney Road in the Gateway Performance District. Staff recommends that the item be determined complete, be determined to development of regional impact, and the public hearing set for September 15th.
Okay, so we have a determination of completeness for this item. Staff recommends that the item, the application, sorry. Staff's found the application complete. We have a motion to determine the application complete, set it as, determine it as a development of regional impact, and set the public hearing for September 15th.
So moved.
Second.
That was ugly. Sorry for that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Did you do the second?
Yes.
Oh, I apologize. Okay.
Motion carries. Item 5B.
Erin Lambert, on behalf of Pope Memorial SPCA of Concord Merrimack County, requests major site plan approval for 1,970 square foot building addition, new parking lot, and associated site improvements at 93 to 95 Silk Farm Road in the open space residential district. Staff recommends that it be determined to complete and the public hearing set for September 15th.
Okay, so 5B is determination of completeness as outlined. Staff has determined it complete. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and set the public hearing for September 15th? It is not, it is not a development of regional impact.
Correct. So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 5C.
McCourt Engineering Associates, on behalf of Pittco Friolator, requests major site plan approval for the construction of a 356,224 square foot manufacturing facility and associated site improvements and, and a conditional use approval, a conditional use permit approval for the expansion of impervious surfaces in the Aquifer Protection District at 15 Integra Drive in the industrial, office park, performance, and residential open space districts. Staff recommends that the application be determined complete, that it is a development of regional impact, and to set the public hearing for September 15th.
Okay, so 5C, staff's determined the application complete. Would someone like to make a motion to find the application complete? It is a development of regional impact and set the public hearing for September 15th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. 5D.
Grayman Peterson Incorporated, on behalf of Wheelabrader Concord Company, requesting major site plan approval for the paving of new parking area and a conditional use permit to allow for the payment in lieu of planting all of the required trees at 11 Whitney Road in the industrial district. Staff does recommend the application be determined complete and the public hearing set for September 15th.
Okay, so 5D is, staff has found the application complete and not a development of regional impact and set the public hearing for the 15th of September. Would someone like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And I should apologize for the audience. If anybody was looking to speak to any of those issues, those are just determination of completeness, more of a protocol that we have to go through to find the application complete, set the public hearing. There's no public testimony, no, no discussion regarding it. So we will hear all the public testimony on those at the next meeting. So let's move on to item six on our agenda.
That's your, that's your-
Yep, so design review by consent. So here we have items 6A, B, C, D, and E on our agenda. Our design review applications by consent. These are all signs. The, the board has received them in their packet, reviewed them. Any member of the board wish to pull any of these items off of the consent agenda? So any member of the audience have any issues with any of the signs outlined in 6A, B, C, D, or E? If you could just please make yourself known. If not, we're gonna hear them all in one shot, or we're gonna accept them all in one shot. Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and we will take a motion to approve items on consent under 6A, B, C, D, and E with architectural design review recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. That moves us on to our public hearing section for the night. Let's read item 7A into the record if we could.
Neo Craft Signs, on behalf of Bangor Savings Bank, requests retroactive ADR approval for the installation of a new internally illuminated freestanding sign at 100 Loudon Road in the institutional district. We pulled this from consent, put it on public hearing because the sign already had been installed. The story behind that is that they did go to ADR. ADR gave recommendations, and then they subsequently went to the zoning board and got a variance. So the applicant, and I guess, I think we're not really sure what exactly happened. They were supposed to then come back to the planning board, but they never did. So I assume the zoning administrator assumed, thought this was, or the, I'm not sure, the sign person thought that this was a staff thing, that we should have brought them back, or that they should have sent them back and nobody ever told them they had to come back. So they were not charged any of the fees, but they, they did pay an additional sign application fee. And I believe that ADR recommended approval.
Yep, they did. And it was some time ago, if I'm not mistaken, right? It was like a couple of years ago?
No, it wasn't that long ago.
2018.
Oh, it was in 2018.
Been a couple of years.
Well, COVID was a blur.
Okay, so this is before we started our, before we really started pushing on signs and making sure that people were coming to see us before they put them up. We do have a recommendation from ADR to approve it as submitted. Is there any discussion? Any member of the audience wish to address this application? If not, someone like to make a motion to grant that, to approve that sign as submitted with ADR recommendations?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Good?
Yep. No, we, I think we forgot to close the public hearing, but we're done now.
Oh.
It's okay.
All righty, move on to item eight on our agenda.
8A is-
See, guys thought we were moving right along, said we're gonna slow things down a little bit.
I do not know how to say this, so I'm just going to say it. Pan Chioco Law, on behalf of Strategic Contracting, requesting a one-year extension of a conditional site plan and subdivision approval for a proposed cluster subdivision at Hoyt Road in the open space residential district. It's pretty straightforward. It's exactly what, what it is. It's a request for an extension of the approval.
Okay, no staff update, no, no report on it. It's pretty, pretty, looks, looks like it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Any issues?
Nope. They've provided revised plans. Staff is going through those now. I spoke with the attorney this morning, and she's working on the condo documents, and we should have those soon. So I don't see any issue. But, so there's two recommendations to extend the site plan and condo subdivision approvals, and also they have a conditional use permit for wetland buffer disturbance. That doesn't expire till October, but I'd put that in there just to extend it another year because construction has to start, so they don't have to come back again for another extension. So there's two recommendations in there.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody have any questions or concerns regarding this application? No? Any member of the board have any questions or concerns? No? If not, we'll take them both in one shot. Beth, is that okay?
Close the public hearing. I think it should be two.
Carol, will you pinch him every time you should close?
Keep me, stick him in the pen, and I'll close the public hearing. Close the public hearing and-
They're like big spider bites.
Look to staff to say-
They had to stick him with a needle to get him to play.
Should I take these in both? One is fine?
No.
No?
I would do it as two separate.
Okay, two separate recommendations. So under one in your packet here, we've got, "Staff recommends planning board approve the applicant's request for a one-year extension to meet the amended conditions of the major site plan and condominium subdivision as part of this action. Indicate the conditions of the original and amended approval shall remain in full force and effect. Precedent conditions shall be met by August 18th, 2022." Someone like to make a motion to grant that extension as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And two there is to staff recommends planning board extend the approved conditional use permit per Section 2843D of the zoning of the, of the ZO for disturbance of wetland buffer. The proposed layout will disturb approximately 2,000 square feet of buffer for site grading and stormwater improvements. Construction shall commence by October 16th, 2022. Would someone like to make a motion to extend that conditional use permit?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. So that is it on that one. Thank you very much. Let's move on to item 8B in our agenda.
Belanger Surveying, on behalf of Anita Whiting and Tex Michael Whiting, requests minor site plan approval for a lot line adjustment between 74 and 77 Blueberry Lane in the single family residential district. Staff does recommend that the application be determined complete and the public hearing opened.
Okay, so we have a determination to penis for this, and would someone like to make a motion to, there's no development of regional impact, obviously. Determined-
Oh, yes, it is not a development of regional impact. Sorry.
See?
You caught me.
Someone like to make a motion to find the application complete, not a development of regional impact, and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The public hearing's open. Is the applicant here? Come on up. Okay, can we get a quick staff update on this?
Sure. So this is a, just a lot line adjustment. I believe that one of the property owners is preparing to sell a lot, and in advance of that, they are doing this lot line adjustment to bring Lot 74 into greater compliance with the zoning ordinance in terms of dimensional standards. It's, it is on a private road. I think that's worth noting because we do not allow subdivisions. This is a lot line adjustment just for the purpose I just needed. There are a number of waivers being requested associated with this, and given the minor nature of this, they're reasonable requests, and staff supports the waivers.
Staff supports waivers?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Welcome to the table.
Oh, thank you. My name is Jacques Belanger. I'm the surveyor that prepared the application for the Whitings. And that's pretty much boils down to what it is. It's a small sliver of land at the end of Blueberry Lane, I think it's called. The owner's, owns a piece next door, which is a little over 11 acres. The existing lot line cuts through the, it's a small home, cuts through that home. We're looking to shift the lot line over to meet the setbacks, make it a little more conforming lot, more saleable. There are a couple of review comments we had that were, I think, pretty minor. There's an overlap on a well, that existing well. We'll add that easement to the plan. Engineering wanted to see a 4K area as opposed conforming. Well location for the back lot. It's about, I think, four tenths of an acre that we're shifting from one lot to the next lot. So again, it's, it's pretty, pretty minor application. We did incorporate a couple easements because the existing road driveway kind of cuts across both lots to kind of dress up that and make it a little more clearer for the next owners of the lot.
Okay. Any questions from the board? No? Question, sorry. Questions from the board? Anything? Any member of the audience wish to address this application? No? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you very much for testimony. Comments, questions, concerns on this? Or would someone like to make a motion? So we have waivers in your packet here. You've got applications for, requesting waivers for existing topography, wetland delineation soils, natural features, community features, and tabulations, which again, with this type of small adjustment are common. So would someone like to make a motion to grant those waivers as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. And 4.2 is to grant minor subdivision approval for the lot line adjustments at 74 and 77 Blueberry Lane, subject to the following conditions to be fulfilled within one year, outlined in conditions 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. I guess there's no precedent or subsequent additions in there. Are those all precedent?
Correct.
Okay. Someone like to make a motion to grant that minor subdivision approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Let's move on to item 8C in our agenda. We'll recognize that Suzanne Smithmire's gonna recuse herself from this, from this application, and we will read it into the record if we could.
Beaverbrook Planning and Design, on behalf of Joseph Dagel, requests conditional use permit approval to allow impacts to a wetland buffer for construction of a single-family home at 60 Snow Pond Road in the open space residential district. Staff does recommend the application be determined complete, not a DRI, and to open the public hearing.
Okay, so we have a determination of completeness component to this. It's not a development of regional impact. Someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Public hearing's open. Is the applicant here?
I'm representing the applicant.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need, yeah, okay. Go ahead.
Yeah, because I think I can address some of the stuff that Suzanne would. So this is for, conditional use permit for wetland application, for wetland disturbance for demolishing an existing home and building a new one. The applicant went before the Conservation Commission last week. Conservation Commission had requested that the applicant provide additional information showing that this was the only, the best location for the house and the barn. I'll bring, they sent a plan, a revised plan this morning showing the entire site, and this is, I'll bring it up on the screen in a minute. This location on the site is the only location where there's enough room between the 50-foot front yard setback and the 50-foot wetland buffer. There's approximately 2,000 square feet of temporary impacts. There are permanent impacts from the barn and staff, this is not in my letter, but we, I'm gonna recommend that, that we request that they relocate the barn so that it does not permanently impact. There's, they can shift it so that it does not impact the wetland buffer. So I would request that be added as a recommendation when we go forward with the recommendations. Also, the applicant has to, they'll have to get a shore land permit through the state, so that's another level of review that will happen after our approvals today. It's currently two separate lots. They'll need to do a voluntary lot merger. That was not shown on the existing conditions plan, but it was brought to my attention later. So that will have, I'm gonna make that, I would recommend that be a precedent condition that prior to signing off, that those lots be merged, because otherwise the house will be non-conforming. It will be within the setbacks of one of the lots. And then also, per the request of Conservation Commission, it is a standard recommendation from our site plan regulations that wetland buffers be marked, but the Conservation Commission recommended that it be spelled out as a recommendation that they mark the wetland buffers prior to the issuance of the building permit. So that's another subsequent condition that I will add when you are ready to make your votes.
Okay. Are we ready to make a votes, or we?
Do you want me to bring the plan up so you can see?
Well, it just, I'm concerned that there's a, there's a joining of the lots that we're doing after the fact that we're giving them approval.
It's okay. It'll be a condition.
As a condition, it's okay?
Yeah, it's, yeah, we've done that for several properties.
Is it the same plan that's in our packet, Beth?
No. Is it a zero?
Zero.
Oh, my goodness.
Should I?
Can we change this password?
Would it help us stick it into my?
Beth, just do what I do. Write it on a sticky note and put it on the-
Well, it's written right here, but they have, it's conquered with zeros instead of Os, but you have to remember.
It's zero.
Is it zero?
Remind you.
So this drawing here is not in your packet, but this shows the entire parcel where you can see the wetland buffer pretty much goes right up to the 50-foot setback. So this is the only location where there's a big enough space between the front yard setback and the 50-foot wetland buffer. Conservation Commission asked if it could be moved closer to the road, but that would require a variance, and we typically do not make recommendations that somebody get a variance if a conditional use permit is allowed within the zoning ordinance. Oh, there was a question about this, this deck here. And I've been told that's a freestanding deck where it, where it goes over the wetland buffer. There's no posts. It'll be sort of cantilevered out over the wetland buffer there.
So even though it's showing, it's showing that it comes over the buffer, over the wetland buffer, it cantilevers out and doesn't-
It doesn't hit the ground surface. Yeah. So this is the barn location where we're requesting it be shifted.
Where is the barn location? Show me again. Okay.
It's right here.
That barn is already there?
No, that's a proposed barn. So I'd like to request that the board recommend that that be relocated to be outside of, to eliminate that permanent impact. And it can be shifted either further down or if there's room down here, but-
Or made into a triangle.
Yes. An ever-popular triangle barn.
Okay, and what's that? What's, it's a 75-foot buffer?
It's a 50-foot wetland buffer.
Is it wet or sloped?
It's not wet. It's outside the wetland area, so it's a, it's an upland area. I think it's relatively flat.
Okay.
If you look at the contours.
So the existing house is gonna be removed?
Correct. So the existing house is within the front yard setback here, and there's an existing shed. And they will be cleaning up their scrap metal and other debris that's on the site from the previous owner that they will be cleaning up and restoring.
And the proposed septic is there now or not?
That I'm not sure.
That's Suzanne Smithmire, Melansky Architect in Concord. The existing septic system is going to be removed or sunsetted, I guess, and then that's a new septic system. And they also have to get that approved. But that's the best location.
Okay, in that, and where's the existing septic? In that same-
It might even be hard to find. I don't know.
Oh, good.
A long time ago, they're hard to find.
Hope it's not going into the pond.
But it's gonna be just continued.
Okay. Okay, anything else from staff? Questions from the board? Any member of the audience wish to address this application? Come on up.
Where do you want me?
Right at the table here. If you could just sign in and state your name for the record.
My name is Diana Townsend. We live on 74 Snow Pond Road, which is right beside this property. So our only question is where the drainage will all be directed, the wetlands. Because this property does sit down originally. There is a old mobile home, I guess you would call it, sitting there. There is no home. It's a mobile, old mobile home. So our only question is how the water is gonna be redirected or directed? Because our property is all wetlands except for where our house sits. All the water comes our way.
As you look at this property, are you north of, are you up on the plan or down?
I guess we're up. So I'm just gonna stand here. I'm sorry. So we're this way.
Okay.
So that's my only question.
And you're lower than, you're lower than they are.
Are we higher or lower? We're lower.
You're lower. Okay.
That's my only question.
Good question. We'll see if we can get an answer for you. Thank you. Okay, any, looking to Beth. Any, any thought on, do you know what, there's no retention ponds or?
I would defer to Suzanne, who's part of the design team.
Come on, Suzanne. You already stated your name for the- You already stated your name for the record, so we don't need to ask you that again.
So there's very little alteration of anything happening to the north of the site. It's all to the south where the existing structures are.
Can you move the microphone closer to?
I'm sorry. All the development is in the southern edge of the property where the existing structure is that's gonna be removed and the shed that's gonna be removed. So there'll be no disturbance really towards the north, and there's quite a bit of, you can see there's quite a bit of distance, so none of that is gonna be touched at all. And so there has to be some topography change, but it won't impact anything to the north.
Do we have a topo plan?
There's, there's topography rate where the construction is gonna be.
And roads high, the ponds low, so everything is going from the road toward the pond based on the contours.
Right, so we've got, what's the, the existing woods road, it looks like it comes down where your, where your proposed parking area is. Is that parking area gonna be paved?
The parking area will be paved. And that comes from an existing access point off of Snow Pond Road. And the woods road is basically the majority of it is just a compacted dirt. And there is a access to the north, but that won't be used actively like the one from the south, which is where they'll be parking their cars and access the home.
Okay, so then runoff from that and the building will go nowhere.
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 I mean, there's so much.
Yeah, yeah, no, there's no.
Impervious, you know, area that it will just be absorbed into the groundwater.
Okay, thank you. Whoops, hang on. Yes, Carol?
There, there will be a fairly substantial increase in impervious surface at the south end of the lot between the buildings and the driveway.
Yep.
But it is relatively level once you get down the slope from the road. But they will have to build, I think the intent is to actually build up around the road where the leaching field is gonna be, and that it will be a walkout basement towards the pond. And that, the, obviously, there's a roof on the building. But the shed will be gone and the future barn will be to the north. So, I mean, there's more roof area than what is there presently, but that can easily be taken care of before it gets, even, it can be, even before it gets into the pond. It will slowly work its way into the ground first.
So is the edge of the pond open water, or is there?
There's, no, there's vegetation between the pond.
So there's some marsh?
There's some marsh, yeah. The, the area where the house is, is kind of like a low rough grass. I can't say that it's all ferns, but that was the original access. If you call it access to the pond, I mean, there's no docks or anything like that. You could just walk to the pond. Or you, it's mostly for the view, I think, than accessing the pond, but there is a buffer, a vegetative buffer between the actual pond edge and where the construction is gonna be. And the intent is to keep that. And again, that all the permitting needs to be approved, the shoreline permitting, the septic permitting.
Okay. Anything else? Any other questions, Carol, or Suzanne? Thank you very much.
Do you want me to bring contours up?
No, it's fine. Okay. So any other discussion from the audience? Anybody else wish to address this application? No? We'll close the public hearing. Further discussion from the board?
So.
Yep.
It just seems interesting. I understand what Beth was saying about the variance versus the C E P, but it seems that could be better to shift it towards the road to get it away from
Yeah.
pond.
Doesn't look, I mean, just from the plans, it doesn't look like there's enough room to, to even squish it right up next to the house, so.
We can't do anything about that here, right?
Right.
Okay.
Right?
Right.
Shouldn't answer that quickly and that decisively unless I'm a hundred percent sure.
Know what you're doing.
No, the planning board cannot make a recommendation to get a variance.
I know, I was just hoping you would say there's some way around it.
If you only do so much magic.
I know.
And there's no issues putting a septic in the leach field in that in that buffer, right?
No, it's only a building setback.
Only building setbacks. Okay. So in our packet, we've got, whoops. We've got the report. We did address the concerns, well, not concerns, but the question regarding runoff is it's just groundwater runoff, so it'll be there won't be any retention ponds and there won't be any funneling or movement of the water. So in our packet, we've got we've got some changes that Beth needs to make before we can address anything. Could you want us to look at, there's no waivers or anything in this? It's just a condition, grant the conditional use permit?
Correct.
No site plans, no nothing?
Nope, it's a single-family residence. It's not required.
Okay. So in our packet, Beth, we've got to grant the conditional use permit approval to allow for the disturbance of wetlands buffer for the construction of a single-family residence. We've got existing in our packet precedent conditions A, one and two, and subsequent conditions B, one. What would you like to add?
I would like to add two precedent conditions. One, or I guess it would be number three. Applicant shall relocate the barn to be outside of the fifty-foot wetland buffer.
Okay.
And for a voluntary lot merger shall be approved and recorded.
Okay, any subsequent condition changes?
Yep, and then I will add subsequent condition number two, which is prior to the issuance of a building permit, wetland buffer discs shall be installed in accordance with section thirty-six point two eight of the site plan regulations.
And that's it?
Yes.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion to grant conditional use permit as outlined so eloquently with those three additions to the packet?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded for the discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so you're all set with that? And.
Can I just?
Yes.
Mark one thing?
Yep.
So what happens for us as far as drainage and all of that? Because everything is wetlands there. I'm not opposing to them building whatever. I just wanna make sure that that water's not coming our way, because it already does come our way. So is anyone looking at that?
So I brought up the, I brought up the topography and would I would recommend you maybe look on the city's G I S. You can see the contour lines.
I do, I do.
Okay, so there are multiple contour lines on their property that are lower than yours?
Very low, yeah.
And so the, this proposal is not proposing to fix any any drainage problem and the, so the any additional drainage that they're making should go the other way. It shouldn't come, there's no, there's no swale to your house from their property. What's coming to your house is just the regular drainage.
Not all the way even though.
Right, right.
They're not gonna direct it any.
No, that's not being directed to your house. It's, it will run off towards the pond in that direction, or you indicated some other, towards the road, some other point. I can't recall exactly what you said, but if you look at the topography.
It does sit down, so.
Yeah.
They have dug, not them, these people, but previous owners have dug this all up and made a mound to the road. So that's gonna have to I don't know what they're planning on doing, but that's gonna have to be leveled out. So where is that water gonna sit down after that? It, it won't go up to your house. I don't sit up, I sit down.
But according to the contours on the plan, your house is actually a higher elevation than the location of their house. So it's not gonna go that way.
Can we just have it noted? That it is.
Sure, it will be, it will, it will absolutely be in the minutes of the meeting.
As a concern in case anything happens. I'm not told, I, they can build, I don't care about that. I just don't mind their water.
Yeah.
Okay?
Noted. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll recognize Suzanne back as a board member in all the full capacity, voting, et cetera. And we'll move on to item eight D on our agenda.
Welcome home.
Joseph Benaria, on behalf of Manchester Sand Gravel and Cement, request conditional use permit approval to allow a compost facility at two hundred Sheep Davis Road in the industrial district. Staff does recommend that the application be determined complete. It is a development of regional impact, correct?
Correct.
And, and the public hearing be opened.
Okay, so we have a determination of completeness for this application. The staff has found the application complete and a development of regional impact. Someone like to make a motion to find the application complete and open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Public hearing is open. If you're here for that, if you want to come on up. If not, you don't have to, but we'll get a staff update if we could on this.
Sure, so this proposal received several variances. So there's not a lot to the plan because they weren't required to build parking spaces. They're building a small building. And there's minimal changes besides adding the compost rows to the site.
So variances from zoning?
I'm sorry, yes, the zoning board, yeah.
Okay.
Issued several, they're outlined under the general comments.
Okay.
There are some conditions that staff is recommending. There's an existing paved area. This is, portion of the site is within the Shoreland Protection District. There's an abandoned parking area that we, staff is recommending that the board require that they restore this, even though it's outside of the operations that they're proposing. This is an opportunity to restore that portion of the Shoreland Protection District, so that's a recommendation that we are making. And I think they've addressed, they submitted a new plan today, which is on the computer if we want to bring it up. It's not within your packet. That shows I, there was some of the rows shown within the two hundred and fifty-foot buffer that has been relocated outside of that two hundred and fifty-foot buffer. And I think everything else is addressed. It, oh, it will be going to the, in anticipation of the board recommending this be a determined, a development of regional impact. We notified the Pembroke Planning Board. They've put it on their agenda for next week, so that's another condition of approval that this won't be finally improved until we receive comments from Pembroke. Center New Hampshire Regional Planning Commission has reviewed it, and they didn't have any comments or concerns.
Remind me when we get there, okay? Okay, thank you for that. Welcome to the table. If you could state your name for the record?
Sure, my name is Byron Bedard. I'm an attorney with the Rans, Meyer &amp; Spelman. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Holden couldn't make it this evening, so he's asked me to sit in his place. There's a fairly lengthy narrative in here, but I'll give you a, an overview of it, and you can ask me any questions you have after that. This is approximately thirty-four acre site that is both in the industrial and residential open space zones. There is about five and a half acres of this property in the industrial zone, which we propose to use for the composting operation. And it's shown on the plan. Thank you very much for bringing it up.
It's kind of split between these two, but.
And, and the plan essentially shows here the proposed area where composting is going to occur. It's gonna have windrows located in there. One of the recommendations from staff was that the windrows not be higher than twenty feet. And we're certainly agreeable to all the recommendations that came out in the most recent staff memo, as well as the conditions of approval in there. There's gonna be a thirty by thirty building located over in this area, right about here, along with a couple of parking spaces. That building is to house equipment for the operation, so the windrows can be turned. That is the sole purpose for that building. It's also gonna provide a bathroom facility for the employee that's turning the windrows there. The entire operation is slated to be in the industrial zone outside of all different buffers. The one thing I'd like to correct or mention in our narrative is that the properties immediately surrounding this property here are in fact sand and gravel and state uses. There is a residential butter across the road, and we contacted them about any concerns they've had, and they were here for the variance hearings as well. With that said, like I said, we agree with the recommendations of staff and the conditions they've desired to impose. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this project.
So this is leaf and compost, compost only, right? Leaf and grass compost?
That is correct.
So no food waste or anything?
No food waste.
No smelly stuff?
No smelly stuff. As a matter of fact, Mr. Benaria would tell you he doesn't want any sticks or branches in it because it slows down composting.
Not standing. Okay, questions? Byron?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's the water source? Is this site on city water, or is there a well, or?
There's no water source for this property.
Okay, what, you said there was going to be a bathroom for the employee who was there? Is this a porta potty or something?
Uh, this, you're gonna laugh at this. Probably a composting toilet, sir.
Okay, no, that's, I'm not laughing, that, that's great. Isn't there, I'm sorry, follow-up?
Yep.
Isn't there a requirement to wet down the compost during particularly hot, dry periods? I thought I read that in the material that we have.
You are correct, sir. So if there, if that was the case, we'd be bringing, we, in the beginning, we'd be bringing water by truck if that was necessary. The composting, if you turn it frequently enough, should not truly require watering down unless you get extraordinarily dry conditions for an extended period of time. The goal of this composting operation is to have a thermophile or hot composting with an internal temperature of above one hundred and thirty-one degrees without exceeding what the maximum temperature is, without exceeding maximum temperature which kills the bacteria that facilitates the composting. And this is something that is essentially when it's in operation, it's going to have very active turning to maintain that temperature and monitoring of it.
So when he's not on the composting toilet, the gentleman or the lady will be turning the compost?
That is correct.
All right, and part of the reason for it being hot, I believe, is to ensure that we don't have any invasive species coming up from Massachusetts?
That is one of them, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely, great questions. And a chuckle. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. About how many vehicles are you expecting to be coming to and from the site on a daily basis to be bringing material in?
It's gonna vary dramatically from day to day. And so there are times in the, in the spring and fall when they're doing yard cleanups, where you'll see a number of vehicles. Currently, with this, the design here is Benaria is currently going, coming to New Hampshire to pick up material from Dirt Doctors and Fillmore and other facilities up here. The desire is to actually have the truck full on the flip side of the trip, so instead of coming up empty to pick up, you know, dirt or aggregate, they would have a load of compost in it, dumped at the facility, go pick up at Dirt Doctors or someplace like that, return full. And vice versa, if they were coming up full to dump, they would stop at Dirt Doctors and go back.
So that's no offense, but that still didn't kind of answer my rough idea of, are you talking five trucks a day, ten trucks, three?
On, the average we expect would be ten. Okay? It could be higher on some days, and certainly some days will be lower.
And these are full-size trailer dump, so they're
These are.
Sixty some odd?
The ten-wheel.
So they're dump truck, ten-wheel dump trucks, they're not trail, tractor-trailer size?
Not anticipated to be tractor-trailers.
Because one of my questions was, I looked at the site, was I'm kind of wondering how the circulation was gonna be if it was a very large vehicle. Okay. Thank you.
So it's not a, consumers aren't gonna be coming in, homeowners are.
Absolutely not. This, this is, this is a captive site for Benaria. So it is Benaria-generated leaf and yard waste from its landscaping operation that's coming up here, being composted, and the end product is going back to Benaria for use in their landscaping operation.
And where are they, where are they based?
Waltham, Massachusetts.
Hence the question about the invasive species coming up from Massachusetts.
I read the package, Mr. Chairman.
You did, very well. Okay, other questions? Any member of the audience wish to address this application? No? Okay. So we will close, close the public hearing? Thank you very much for your testimony. Any other comments, concerns from the board? No? Okay.
I like composting.
I like composting, there you go. So again, we don't have anything on here. There's no building, there's no, nothing, so all we have is a, to grant a conditional use permit. Do you have anything to add, anything?
Well, I just, I will note that there is the thirty by thirty building. It was not on the plan in your packet. It was on the Z B A variance application, and it's on the revised plan we received. They do not trigger site plan, but I, I just, it is noted in the staff report and just in the minutes, maybe note that if they do any additional paving or gravel area, or if they expand that building, they'll, they should come back to planning to determine if they need to come back for a site plan review.
So do we want to add that in as a, as a precedent, subsequent condition?
I mean, it's just noted. I mean, it's just noted.
Just noted, okay.
I mean, unless you want to, but...
Really noted, no, that's fine, we don't need to add them if we don't want to. Okay, so we've got in our packet to grant conditional use approval in accordance with Article 28, 2 dash 4C of the zoning ordinance to allow for the proposed leaf and grass composting facility at 200 Sheep Davis Road in the residential open space, RO and industrial IN districts subject to the following precedent and subsequent conditions, and those are outlined in precedent conditions 1 through 8 and subsequent condition 1. Would any, would someone like to make a motion to grant conditional use permit approval as outlined?
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. You're all set, thank you. You learned more about composting with this client than you ever wanted to know, right?
You're right.
I'll bet.
Thank you very much, okay, that brings us to item 9 on our agenda, which is other items, and again, we mentioned at the beginning of the meeting that this item has been moved to a future date uncertain, or no certain date, so moves us on to item 10 in our agenda, which is proposed amendment to the subdivision regulation, Section 30.06, reduction of financial guarantees regarding the amount of guarantee that may be reduced in relation to the value of completed improvements. Heather?
This is...
This has got your name written hollow.
Yeah, it's, it's basically a housekeeping item, one of the property owners brought to our attention that the way that our subdivision regulations was written about sureties was not in compliance with the RSA statute, and so legal basically rewrote the language. It may or may not have any significant impact on the actual amount of money that, that we're doing or holding, I mean, in other words, the change in the old language may result in similar amounts, but this language complies with the RSA statute more clearly.
Okay, well, it's always nice to have a homeowner point that out to us and make that change. So, in your packet...
To be fair, there was a change in the RSA's.
There was a change in the RSA's, we just didn't, we just didn't pick it up. Okay, so in the, in your packet, you've got the recommendation to amend the subdivision regulations in accordance with RSA 674363B to allow the city to retain only the amount of financial guarantee needed to complete remaining work, including inflation cost escalation over time. Would someone like to make a motion to, what are we doing?
You approve it.
Approve it, approve this recommendation?
So moved.
Second. Approve the amendment.
Approve the amended, amend, approve the amendment.
Right.
I move that we approve the amendment.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, so that is approved.
I do have a certification that has to be signed by all of you, so we'll pass that around when the meeting ends.
Okey-dokey. Any other business which may come before the board? Do we have anything else on our, on our docket with Lisa? Nothing?
No, I'm just wondering what your record meeting was.
I don't know, but we're pretty close to it, at 7:49. Carol's, it's because Carol's back.
That's right, welcome back.
Anything else from the board?
Back on the whip.
If not, we will entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and roundly seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion accepted, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Don't leave until you sign this sheet.
Thank you for making my burden light.
Welcome to town.